Call the meeting to order, do your roll call. So George Knoll, Dustin Johnson, Suzanne Unball, Derek Jones, Town Attorney, and Lisa Malany, Court Treasurer. Let's stand and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes for June 5th, 2016, regular session.
July.
July, I apologize. July 5th. This year is going way too fast. Any issues? Uh, motion.
I move to accept the minutes for July 5th.
Second.
Got a motion in second, two. Accept the minutes for July 5th, 2017. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Citizens input.
One short thing. Lisa was kind enough to call me the other day and tell me my house was flooding with water. And we didn't know it. And it ran up a heck of a bill before we found it. Thanks to her, I don't know anybody would've found it. But we've had a heck of a water bill. And at least in years past, you have understood that and cut that bill back to the normal bill since it was a leak that we didn't know anything about. But they said we had to get permission from y'all to do that. I've already paid the bill. Decided to do that, I'll just take it off the next month's bill.
What kind of amount?
We went from about a $19 water bill to a $370 water bill.
Is that a lot of leak?
What was?
Well, it was upstairs toilet and nobody was running and nobody's up there anymore hardly ever. I store things up there. Once in a great while they won't.
You both have hearing problems. Is that just the water or water served both? Or is it just water?
It's just the water. That's bad.
They cut the water, the sewage back down where it was long. That's a heck of a water bill. And every summer you give water losses from lines, so I don't see any difference here.
I still advise occasionally.
I know if it would've been a break, I mean, we've always we've always given sewer credit usually on something like that. Even though it did go down the sewer. Like a lot of times water breaks and they go into the basements and they're falling out. I hate to say yes and then everybody, Jill Blower, her brother, come in next week and say, "Oh, I did this and did that." And they didn't, but they just used the water, used it as an excuse.
That's not a very good excuse.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I don't.
But it's, again, you know, there's no way we would've...
It's out of the norm.
Yeah, way out.
Way out of the norm.
I got the bill from two months ago that shows our water bill was $18.46, $47. This one is $369.33. And our last three total combos, last month was 141.56, the month before that it was 155.72, the month before that it was 154.64. This one that was 588.66. A little bit of sticker shop.
If we choose to do this, we'd be sitting in a press conference. Someone could be over there.
Is the problem fixed?
Yeah.
Fix it?
We won't. Water is turned off up there for now. Till we get a new stool installed.
One time deal? Each thing is its... We've done, we did things with lights, we've done things with water, we've done things with sewer. Let me think about it. We'll give you an answer before we enter the meeting. How's that?
Well, go ahead and be if you just have, you know, please.
Oh, stop by.
The folks call me. It's already paid.
It's paid.
It was paid.
Saved the lake for you, didn't it?
Yeah. No, it's a plate of that.
Yeah, we didn't want to do that.
Let me know.
Okay, we will.
I can have my children phone, but I can't hear anyway. Yeah. One other thing. One other thing before we leave and we do have to leave. How is this thing with Jerry Chavez doing? Is this...
Ask me.
Why am I done? I didn't even see him come in. There he is. I don't know what your question is.
Have you got your, have you got your deal down here?
The planning session for the...
You know, if you want to call me after this, I'd be happy to discuss with you.
Maybe I have people who'd be interested in that.
Well, he definitely is here tonight.
Oh, that's right, your ear's like, okay. All right, I'll let you talk then, I'll try.
Jamie, did you want to say something?
Just on that water leak, we've had other commercial accounts and things like that have had some big water leaks and haven't cut them or break. You know, depending on what it is, we might knock off the sewer, like you said, but a lot of times the water, we won't give credit for it.
We'll let you know. Okay.
You ready?
Um, let's see, well, he's got to say, he's got to say something fantastic.
Any more citizens input?
I, one thing real quick.
Okay.
I'm trying to make it quick. From what I understand, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, but there was some discussion about the council and the murals and things downtown. I mean, and some things the town wasn't doing for certain things. I just, I mean, I just want it to be known that in my own personal opinion, I mean, I own my home, I take care of my home. I don't expect the town to come in and remodel my home, refurbish my home, to make it worth more so that I can sell it or gain more money off of that. I mean, I don't think that it's the responsibility of myself or any other taxpayer in this room to pay for upgrades and things for somebody else's business. I mean, our building, whether it be their home or a building that they're using for business purposes. With that being said, I mean, there are obviously other ways to go about that. I mean, with the grants that are out there for that type of thing. I just don't think that if the council were to continue to do that, that that is a good idea either. Because, I mean, that's the money, that's tax money that each and every one of us in here that owns property pays to enhance or upgrade somebody else's property. I just don't, I don't think that's the responsibility nor should it be the purpose or something that tax dollars is used for. But that's my opinion.
Well, thank you. Any other citizens input? And then her old business attorney report.
The only thing I had to talk about was the 405 South Michigan Street, but actually I think Chuck, wherever he got off to.
Oh, I couldn't find him either.
I think Chuck may do more talking than me, so.
I apologize for not having something in print for you. Had difficulty downloading my pictures and getting the files together and IT said that they work on it tomorrow, so. What I've looked at, I'll just kind of give you a quick. These are trees growing up in the back. You can see the trees growing through the tires now. Tree that size didn't start growing through the tires. You know, fence is dilapidated. There are probably 15 to 20 holes in the roof. You see the deterioration of the chimney. Just starting up there, the caps all off and splitting down through there. Holes through the rubber EDPM. You can see where the water is going in. Holes just about on all sides. Splits, I mean, water just runs down in there. When you get to the sides of it, you can see where the paint is coming off. The water is coming down inside the building. It's trying to escape through the concrete blocks and the walls. That's what's causing the paint to peel off and fall there. Unable to get into the inside of it, so cannot make a determination how stable that roof is. I know that I would not walk on it, seeing the condition of it. I did try all of the pictures and everything was taken from a bucket truck. I think, you know, we don't have any power going into that building right now and no means of getting it there at this point because the wires have been taken down, the can is down and everything else. I feel that we should send them a letter asking to meet them there to examine the rest of the structure. And at the very minimum, we need to ask them to bring that up into compliance as far as safe building and safe around the outside of the building. You know, right now it doesn't appear to be in as bad a shape as the building that, you know, was torn down. But going inside, it could be even worse. Because this building has more wood in it, more wood structure than the other. It had more steel in it, because this was an older building.
So, 405 South Michigan Street. Gas station is south of the park.
There is poison ivy around there, really bad. Some of it's been taken down, but it's growing back. It's all on the building, it's in the building. I feel that we need to start moving forward. Trying to get inside would be the next step, but minimum we need to have them bring it up into compliance for safety and security at this point. Any questions? I'm sorry.
Are you thinking a letter from me, Chuck? Are you thinking a letter from your office?
I think I will send you a letter and then you should send that one as a town attorney.
Right now you're really wanting to meet with them to just see structurally, internally, what you're dealing with?
Yeah. I mean, that'd give us the whole picture, but right now, you know, you can tear it down today without losing much.
But until you get inside, you can't really tell?
There's probably 15 to $25,000 worth of work minimum just to put a new roof on. That's it. The sub-surface is in decent shape, which it doesn't appear to be. So, you know, the value of the building probably is going to be outweighed by the cost it's going to take to bring it back into compliance.
Justin. Well, Ron, have you guys ever talked about that? Old churches across the street from us. The thing is, it's not doing the neighborhood any good and it sounds like it's about like this building we're talking about. I don't know if there's anything that can be done to throw or not that makers do anything in there now, but that probably, sooner or later, it's not going to be safe either.
Do you know the address?
They're across the street from us. That church, I don't know. George, you do probably.
Is it 3 something?
Well, we're 300s. So it's right across the street. Thank you, Chuck.
I move that we have Derek submit a letter to the property owner that set up a to get it so that we can get it set up with somebody from the council in Chuck or Jamie in Chuck or whoever.
But if I put that together, Chuck, you take a look at it first before I send it out. Obviously copy you on the letter as well because really it's going to be you or them coordinating with you, not me. But I'm happy to draft that.
Thank you. For some reason, when it comes from the lawyer, it gets a little...
Catches people's attention.
Yeah. Catches everything.
They only do him.
Got a motion in second to have Chuck send Derek a letter and then Derek send out a letter to the ruling order to get them to meet with Chuck so we can figure out if they can come into compliance. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I don't have any more report.
I move to accept the attorney report.
A second. Got a motion in second to accept the attorney report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First, in a letter of resignation here. It's from Robert Lekay. Dear Town Board and Community, due to life's many changes, I must submit this letter of resignation. My wife and I have sold our house and are relocating to a different state with our move date being 21 July 2017. As of 11:59 PM on July 3rd, 2017, I resign from the Argus Department effective 11:59 PM on July 6th, 2017. Please accept my resignation from the BZA. Finally, at 11:59 PM on July 13th, 2017, please also accept my resignation from Argus EMS. It has been with great pleasure to serve this community. Good luck with your endeavors in moving this town forward. Regrettably, Robert Lekay. So. Thanks, Bob. Yeah, thank you. For everything you've been involved with as a Southern community, we appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
On certain days. Then I got a letter. So that leaves a BZA leaving. Then I got a letter from Bill Scott wishing to resign his position on the planning commission and transfer to the open position on the BZA. Says I've been 20-plus years of service at the Plymouth BZA. Could put my experience to better use. Whose appointment is this? Mine?
You appointed him.
Yep, I did. Well, there's so many appointments that I get and then the whole council gets. I'll accept his appointment.
So that leaves planning commission open.
So, yeah, we have one. Open on the planning commission. We have Marshall County Tourism. I did have somebody I've been talking to about that. They're about this close to saying yes. About tourism? Yes. Should keep badger. Anybody's interested, submit a letter of interest to Lisa, the court's office. Next on the agenda is comp plan match with nonprofit. So I got a message from Mr. Chris Van Dying and he stated that he's backing out and he don't want to. So we're not going to be doing the, unless we decide to do it. He's not going to be involved in any of that.
Is he going forward with the grant?
Yeah, well, we voted on that and he didn't say nothing about that.
So do we know where that stands?
I can email him and find out.
Because I'm concerned about that. We don't know if it was committed in the town.
I'll email him and find out. Yes?
And typically that's a USD grant, Suzanne?
I believe so.
Yeah. Before there's any award grant like that, they sit down with you and so there'd be some interaction with the town. So you would know what problems, what's in the document itself. So you have that opportunity. It's not something that you blindly accept without some process.
But that's where we stand with the comp plan match. So if we decide to move forward with, with doing this to the town, we'll have to talk about it and get with Randy and because Randy's still in charge of kind of that, in charge of that, so. You have anything you want to say on that? Any other old business? We're going to move on to new business. I have a letter here from Jim Burrows. Dated July 18th, 2017, to myself and the Argus Town Council. Dear Dustin, it has been my sincere pleasure to serve the Argus community as your utility superintendent. I have learned and grown as an individual these past few years. However, since my accident on November 3rd, 2016, I have had trouble performing my duties. I have struggled to make it work. I am unable to perform even the smallest tasks. Therefore, I must resign my position with the Town of Argus. I will be leaving my position as of July 18th. I regret any inconveniences may cause the town, but I must consider my health and well-being. I feel the town utilities are in good hands with Jamie Lindstrom at the helm. I wish you all continued success. Thank you for your confidence in my position with the town and your support for me personally. Respectfully yours, Jim Burrows, Utility Superintendent, Town of Argus. Where's that word?
I move to re-appoint Jamie Lindstrom as interim utility superintendent.
I'll second that. Got a motion in a second to appoint Jamie Lindstrom as interim utility superintendent. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to move to paving now. Here, I'm getting our young paving. An old business, Jerry. He's sitting there shaking his head.
Can we take care of it?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to do old business, yeah.
So there's a question to ask about where we're at. I don't know specifically what was the building knocking on. Assuming that that's where some updates were going to be requested I was going to cover the bases with some information. From the perspective of the building itself, the appraisal has been ordered, should have been completed yesterday, which means the bank is probably looking it over to make sure the numbers are right. Appraisal is part of loan documents. The building has to, the proposal, construction has to appraise at the dollar amount for the loan. So I should be able to have that, I think. I'm not expecting any surprises, but we have to go through that process. Other processes that we have to go through from the, once the loan is secured and we feel confident that if we're going to get there, at least higher level of confidence, the IEDC should follow in suit with their documentation. They reviewed just as of today, they asked a couple more questions. It was just part of the process. But everybody that's involved from a money perspective has their set of internal processes and review. So that's where we're at right now. IEDC hasn't checked off on it. Plymouth RDA has. IEDC needs to, IEDC is a state fund. So once they do that, then there's a contract that follows along with that as well. We've given them all the information as of shortly after we gave, after the documents were signed. So there are probably maybe 10 or 12 original cities applications that are being reviewed. So it's part of the process, take another look at the... With respect to the internal process or the development itself, I think everybody understands that there was, our engineers were out on site with the drone, taking one-foot increments, what we call topos. You need that so they can start to look at placement of the building levels and whatnot. That's one step in the process. Next step as well is with regards to the platte or actual the 15 acres. Part of that one-foot increments does drive the platte. We will have to go through a platte process, which means the planning commission has to review it. Marshall County Plan Commission has to review that as well. They'll have to come back to council to adopt and that's a legal document. That is part of what the bank will require. We may be able to get them not to, with the assignment of the 30 acres, 50 acres, 50 acres? Can you remember what the, that tract of land that was deeded over to MCEDC prior? They may be able to accept that as in not delay too much on the platte. So we will wait to find out what the rules are with that particular engagement. We've sat down with both Jamie and Jim from an engineering perspective to look at where the existing lines are at water and sewer sizes, understand the elevations. Had a brief discussion somewhat from a planning perspective, what we want to accomplish in this development relative to those stations and these sort of things. I think through that process, we determined that we'll probably extend the utilities a little bit further than within itself just for a, what I'd call, future development perspective.
New one. The new one. It's just south of the old red craft building, across the street.
Have you got people occupied?
Can I finish my presentation and then can I ask any questions?
Sorry.
So with regards to, the architect has done his part. Engineer will have to come in once they look at the soils and look at the one-foot increments. They'll have to go in and start engineering the site. So there'll be planning documents or construction documents that Chuck and Ralph will have to look at and sign off after the state does their portion of the checks and balances there as well. So it's in the process. Just to give you a sense, on the Plymouth project, it was, when the contracts were signed, everybody's in agreement. It was September, they started pushing dirt in, I would say, shortly after I came, about May, June. I hope to beat that benchmark of that timeline probably by quite a bit. My goal is to start pushing dirt as quickly as we can. I'd be comfortable in saying, hopefully by the end of August, beginning of September, we're doing that with the deliverable on a shelf opening by December. That's what I've given instructions to, to boot that handling my, helping, handling the project process as a general contractor, engineering and architect. So should give you a good sense of where we're at. But it's a process and we have to go through the process. It's not something you can design in a bag of a couple weeks.
Alright, thank you.
Have you got anybody to occupy this building yet?
Actually, I will, as soon as this meeting's over, I'll discuss it with you if you want. We can discuss what's going on with that, since you haven't been here.
I know, but we better have an interception out here. That they don't even know how they're gonna take their other traffic with the buildings that are out there. When this road goes through. So I would surely hope that the town did not do what they did in Plymouth, and lose eight million dollars on a building. Because they couldn't get rid of it. And one of the reasons they couldn't get rid of it for the same thing we're talking about now. Let's not go through that.
No, we're not.
Let's go.
Alright. You can call me, Chuck. And for the record, it wasn't a it was on record.
Alright, well, thank you for your work.
You know, I think it's safe to say, we're pushing as quickly as we can. Timing didn't work in our favor. Dustin, it'd been nicer to have this thing at a point where the contract was signed in December. We're in the heat of a very fast-paced construction period, we're actually in the middle of it. A lot of, we're competing with a lot of professional services and projects that are being built today, so. The good thing is, the majority builders understands and is trying to help us as much as possible. So we have an ally, a friend, if you will. In fact, they have pushed, just to give you a sense, just to bring that point home a little bit clearer. Majority builders pushed up a lot of work, they didn't take a lot of work. They still kept this project in the pipeline for us. And they did this primarily because of, A, they want to help Marshall County, the Town of Argus. Remember, Rick Slagle was born in this community, so. So we've got a friend trying to give us as much help as he can. Sure, he wants to get paid, and we want to pay him, we want him to do the job for us.
Thank you, Derek.
Yeah, well, thank you, appreciate it.
Now we're gonna go to paving. We got a proposal from EMB paving. And we're gonna pave ten street. Four, and nine. And the bid is ninety-seven thousand, four hundred dollars.
These are all the streets that are in the Community Crossings Grant, so we have a chance to get seventy-five percent of this money back. We need to put it up for bid.
Do we need two bid?
Well, that's what, and that's kind of my question, how did we get this bid?
We applied for the Community Crossings Grant, and we had to have an estimate on what the cost of the paving would be. So EMB was nice enough to come down and actually give us an estimate.
Proposal.
A proposal.
So this gives us a ballpark range of what we're looking at doing. How soon do we need, because I'm afraid this probably falls outside of the small purchases statutes and gives us into the public works projects, which just means
What, three days?
I'm gonna say it off the top of my head, it needs to be published and what have you.
So we were planning on doing this this year, we have the money. If the Community Crossings Grant comes in for us, they will reimburse seventy-five percent of the cost of it back.
And if it doesn't?
If it doesn't, we have the money to pay for it.
And we will?
And we will. We have set many aside to do this. So what I, Jim had this in the works and Jamie had this in the works for doing these streets this year, right?
I haven't been too much involved in this, Jim and Doug were pretty much handling the paving, so
Doug's in Italy.
I'm kinda catching up.
So we, we put in our Community Crossings Grant that we were going to do this anyway. That we were asking for reimbursement for this. So what I need from you is, or what we need to do is move forward. We're getting into the last of the paving seasons, so we would need to put this out for bid as soon as possible in order to get it done this year.
In other words, how to bid, how do we need to do this to get it rolling?
But this is a ballpark figure of what we're kind of looking at.
And am I correct that if we don't get it done this year, if we get the crossings grant, we can still do it next year with that?
Yes, but we did not budget that money. So Right, but we we can if we, we will know by October whether we get this money or not, so we can actually encumber the money.
Okay.
As long as we have them on the hook for like, at least by April of next year, I believe it is. So I'm just
I normally get in trouble when I do this real quick, but it looks like it does fall outside of that small purchases statutes. So yeah, I want to take a look at that. But it may well be, we have to apply a public works bidding, which I think is really just no more than advertising that and publishing the bid specs, and it looks like we probably have a good job of being able to put that together. Let me take a look and
Get it published? We'll get it published.
Is that something that you're wanting to?
Yes, I'll make a motion to go ahead and have you start the process, and if, is that what we have to do to give Lisa permission to go ahead? So she doesn't have to wait till the next meeting?
Whatever it takes to get it.
Yeah, okay. Got motion and a second to start the process. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is that all you need? Is that all you need, telling me from you guys, is what I'm asking? Alright. Any other new business?
This is old business, so quick, sorry. And it's new business. Hey, Mr. Reporter, we have property for sale. The town has proper, the redevelopment commission has property for sale. And we need, yeah, we need that, need that in our, in our report here, that they can contact Redevelopment Commission of Argus, if anybody's looking for building sites for homes. That was it.
Well done.
I gotta figure out how to turn this later, I'm switching over here.
Any other new business? Department had reports, police department.
You should have a report, in fact. I don't have a whole lot, I do a month of reports here, thirteen, we had thirteen criminal arrests, twenty-two traffic arrests. Did you hear my set?
Keep going.
Just keep going.
There was twenty-two traffic arrests, six accidents, we worked, had sixteen criminal arrests. And then that, and then have a whole lot of anything else going on.
Thank you, Cor. Utilities.
Should have reports in the packets, um not sure if Jim can
Anything special? Fire EMS.
I have my report there. Would like to ask the council to purchase that teleram for our education equipment. It's gonna be a fifty-inch, the price of thirty-three hundred dollars, three hundred, thirty-three hundred and sixteen dollars.
Did you bring your
Yeah, you didn't get it?
Yeah.
Dustin's
I got one.
No, they all got it, it has to go that way.
I got all kinds of them.
What did we figure out on the spreader, Mark?
It's, um, it's hard to find the parts, the tips are gonna need, twenty-seven years old.
On the used
It's not thirty years old, it's twenty-seven.
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't looking at purchasing the spreader tonight as well through the fire billing. But I was gonna try to do one at a time, that's what I
Well, our spreader's broke, right?
Yes.
I moved along the fire department to go ahead and buy the new spreader and the new teleram. We have the money in the, from the billing, that's where all of our billing has to go into equipment, that's the money that can be spent on, so. It's there.
Teleram will come out of this year's budget.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
You have your report?
Yes.
You have your report?
I would just like to say though, and as the, just the festival board member, that thanks for the donation you guys gave us, that you put on the festival. The town appreciated it, and it was a lot of work, but
Next year's gonna be bigger and better?
Without you guys, it's not possible to do, so I don't know, Mark's gonna come do a presentation at some point, but for me, I'd just like to say thank you.
Thanks for being on the committee, putting together. Everybody was
There's about five of us that were there all the time.
I was gonna say, it was all the people who was on that committee.
It was awesome, I mean, for anybody that was there before the fireworks, or wasn't there before the fireworks, if you can see all the vendors, I mean, all the vendors said what they want back next year, I mean, they're all tickled, they did good and had a great time.
I think we turned the corner this year.
We did, I mean, first year we were a little struggling, and this year, still some things we struggled with, but next year's gonna be bigger and better?
It's one of living and learning, so having to do what we're doing, what we're doing, you know, so it's great. Thanks for sharing you guys.
Thank you for your work.
Yes.
And then, real quick, and I told you guys last, last night, I didn't think I was gonna be here tonight, but on behalf of Park Board, the question was raised about the flag pole and the water fountain, I just so everybody knows, we're all on the same page. Water fountain is fine, is, will and can be removed, and the flag pole can be erected where the water fountain is.
Did you guys pick out a pole or no? You didn't just, whatever we decided to, okay.
Yep, that's right.
Do we need a motion to proceed with the flag pole?
Yeah, who wants to, who wants to get the price and buy it? I hope the guys will put it up, I'm sure. Oh, we said we weren't gonna give any more projects this year, didn't we? Maybe we'll find out who Lisa can do it?
I mean, Jim
She can install a flag pole.
She can get the price.
Do you want to get prices?
Get right on that.
You want to get prices?
I can get prices, but
Let's, let's proceed with that, get prices and get it going. Memorial, the back, that plaque, the background. Alright, the motion to accept the department head reports. I move to accept the department head reports.
Second.
The motion is second to accept the department head reports. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Claims five seventeen through five eighty-five.
You did it, Derek.
You did it!
It was a very small docket, George. It was, I should have held up and painted on the first one in next month, then you would have made the docket. Okay, so the total docket for July twenty-first is ninety-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is payroll, number fourteen for thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. Number two is color construction for nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Number three is federal withholding taxes at seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and four cents. Number four is Jones Huff Jones and Richard Richardson at six thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Number five is Indiana Department of Revenue Withholding Tax at six thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-seven cents. And the top five claims represent sixty-seven percent of the total docket at sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I tried to buy you cheese fries last night.
I didn't.
And you passed, so.
Well, I didn't realize you were gonna have that much in the dock.
Check that included, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Cheese fries.
What is, nine eight twenty-six? I'm just curious.
Oh, weed killer.
Oh, yeah.
Premethol.
Premethol and fairway, it's, the fairway, I think it's for the park, and the other was for the electric.
Is that Billy Bad stuff you don't like?
I don't. If it was up to me, I would not vote for that. To accept the claims for seven ninety-nine through eight fifty-eight.
Second, got a motion to second to accept claims, number seven ninety-nine through eight fifty-eight. Nine eight twenty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, what do we want to do about that water valve?
I'm, we're setting a precedent, if anybody can say we're not responsible for the inside of other people's homes, the choices they make. That's my feeling. It's sad that it happened, but I don't think it's our responsibility.
I don't think we've ever, we've always waved the sewer bill, like, so if somebody's pipe breaks in the basement and floods the basement, we've waved the sewer bill, but we've never waved the water valve, I can remember.
And usually we don't do the sewer if it's a toilet or something, or it's going out for the plant either, so.
Yeah, I agree too, because
Well, he took
In his house, it wasn't outside, it wasn't at the edge of his house, it was upstairs, in his house.
If his air conditioner stuck on and ran for thirty days straight, and he wasn't home, I mean, he still used the electricity, I mean.
I move to just leave the bill the way it is.
Second.
A motion is second to leave this bill the way it is. And he was discounted on the sewer, right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just so everybody knows, I bought and we bought it out of the flowers. A new hose, an end for the community garden, because the other hose, you couldn't walk a foot with it without it kicking in five different places. And it developed a hole in it, and my wife's over there with black electrical tape, trying to tape it up, so. She has some of that, I told her no.
Well, you can build a boat out of it. See, the swerve's. Go from the jerk.
Second.
Got a motion as a second to jerk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.